Good evening, welcome. This is Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. Thank you for joining us. If you're joining us from home, welcome. We do have two council members who are joining us remotely today. Councilmember Atkins and Councilwoman Grant. Okay, first on our agendas today, we have a proclamation. Today is World Prematurity Day. I'll be reading a proclamation honoring World Prematurity Day. And we have with us Megan Valenta and Grace Abu-Assali, who's the Youth Representative on the March of Dimes Board. Megan, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here, thanks.
Welcome, Grace.
Yes.
Okay. Here's the proclamation. Whereas Moms and Babies Face Serious Health Risks, and March of Dimes Fights For Their Health By Supporting Research, Leading Programs, And Providing Education And Advocacy. And Whereas March of Dimes Has Developed A Collaborative Model To Study And Prevent Preterm Birth Through Groundbreaking Research At Six Prematurity Research Centers. And Whereas March of Dimes Is Committed To Mobilizing The Nation By Amplifying The Voices Of Women And Families. And Whereas 3,524 Babies Are Born Preterm Each Year In The State Of Iowa, Representing 9.9% Of All State Births. And Whereas Iowa Received A Grade Of C And A Disparity Index Ranking Of 1.11 On The 2020 March Of Dimes Report Card. And Whereas March Of Dimes Looks Forward To Partnering With Iowa's Leaders In Response To The Continued Maternal And Infant Health Crisis Of Prematurity. And Whereas The Month Of November Is Recognized As Prematurity Awareness Month, And November 17th Is Recognized As World Prematurity Day To Raise Awareness. Now, therefore, I Nicholas Abu-Assali, Mayor Of The City Of Marion, Iowa, Do hereby Extend Special Recognition To March Of Dimes In Eastern Iowa And Proclaim November 17th, 2020 As World Prematurity Day. And I'm sorry I didn't wear anything purple. I didn't have a chance to go home and find something purple before the meeting. But Megan or Grace, would you like to say anything? You're free to address the council.
Sure. Grace, you're more than welcome to speak as well. I'll just take a moment. I just want to introduce myself. My name is Megan Valenta, and I'm a Donor Development Manager With The March Of Dimes. I know firsthand the effects of premature birth because our son was born too soon, at 26 weeks. I just really want to extend a special thank you to you, Mayor Nick, and to Grace. Grace has served for the last two years as our Youth Board Representative For The Eastern Iowa March Of Dimes Board Of Directors. She's been a leader in youth fundraising activities. She promotes better outcomes for Moms And Babies, and she engages her local community in initiatives just like this one. And as you all know, 2020 has been a very challenging year in our communities and certainly as it pertains to the health of expecting mothers and newborns. And just this week, the March Of Dimes Preterm Birth Report Card Was Released. And unfortunately, for the past five years, the preterm birth rate and maternal mortality rate in the United States has continued to climb. The US is considered one of the most dangerous developed nations in which to give birth. And that's not fine. But I'm proud to say that these rates, in fact, in Iowa, have lowered in the last year. With proclamations like these and the community awareness that they bring, we will continue to work towards brighter outcomes as we further our mission for healthy moms and stronger babies. So thank you again to the City Of Marion, your leadership and support today in Prematurity Awareness Day, and in the future. Together, we can make a difference. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, and thanks to you and your board and your volunteers for all your work on this issue. We will make sure that you receive the proclamation, okay?
Great, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Next on the agenda is a presentation regarding AARP Challenge Grant with Iowa BIG. Do we have someone with us?
Yep, you got our Iowa BIG group. Just to introduce everybody here today, it's going to be me, Max Bunny, who is here, and then a couple of my colleagues. We got Bryden Holder, Hudson Haines, and then Jason Bundy. To get started with the project, well, just why Iowa BIG first, it's a project-based course that's partnered with LIMAR and some Cedar Rapids schools. And we have been tasked with this by Brooke Crowdy to find and reach these electric assisted trikes. Just again, the general information, Brooke Crowdy, she applied for the original grant of 5,500 from the ARP. The goal of this grant was to purchase two trikes for our elderly community, and we would then partner with YMCA to rent sort of the trikes there. And then our team here at BIG was tasked to research and propose options for the grant and these electric trikes. And then our proposal to you, the city council, is to match our original grant of 5,500 from the ARP for two additional trikes, which would then make four total trikes for our elderly community. And then to explain the actual trike options. Here's our first trike option. It is a traditional 24-inch tall trike, has a price numbered at $2,200. It is a low-riding trike with a basket included on the back of it. The max charge time is about four hours. The battery life is 500 charges. Battery range is 12 to 24 miles. There are many upgrades available for the trike, including a battery upgrade. Average speed is 10, 15 miles per hour, and the top speed is about 20 miles per hour. Our second trike, this is a 24-and-a-half-inch trike with rearview mirrors included. It also features a backrest in the rear and a basket in the rear, and it's going to cost you around $2,000. The charge time is 48 hours, battery life, probably similar to the other trike. And the range, though, is going to get you around 10, 20 miles. There are various upgrades available with the trike, and the average speed is 10 to 15 miles per hour. The top speed is 20 miles an hour.
So then, as far as our budget goes, if we're looking at our first trike, the trike option number one, it's going to be $2,200 for one, about two for $4,400. And then that's not including a $500 shipping. For trike two, it's a little bit cheaper with one for $2,100, two for $4,200, and then still the $500 shipping. For helmets, if we were to get some quality ones, it'd be $120 for two. GPS system for two trikes, $100, and along with $40 for two speedometers. So then, if we went with trike option number one, our estimated total would be $5,200. And then for our option number two, it'd be just $5,000.
All right, just to give some more general info on the project, why it would matter for the city. The original idea was brought to Brook by an elderly gentleman who he wasn't able to ride his bike with his friend around the city, which is where this idea came from for the electric trikes, which would allow him to do. And as members of our community, we think these trikes would provide a lot more than just that gentleman with the opportunity to ride around, explore the city when they might not be able to ride like original bike, because maybe they're physically not able to, too tired, you know? And we hope you agree, because... Okay, it's back. Sorry, the slide disappeared off my screen for a second. Sorry about that. To get back into the electric trikes, these would provide more than one person with the opportunity to explore the city, because I know even my parents, they've wanted to go around and do this. But say, a grandma who's 70-year-old, they're not physically able to ride a bike, these would provide them with that opportunity. And that would end our conversation here. And I just want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work on the project. So we'll take questions for the team at this point. I'll just start with, what's the amount of the match you're looking for?
The original grant was from the ARP for 5,500. So we were looking to match that. We were planning on buying two trikes, which would then make it four trikes if the grant were to be matched.
Okay. And these would be housed where?
We would partner with the YMCA. We wouldn't have to worry about them being stored outdoors. They would be stored indoors.
Okay, so residents of the community would check them out at the YMCA? Okay. Questions? Yes, go ahead, Steve.
One quick question on these trikes. So they have a, they're battery-powered of some type. Do the individuals get some, how much exercise do they get from these trikes?
They're, so they're electric-assisted, so they'd still be... Yeah, they'd still be pedaling. However, say they're tired, or they just don't want to pedal fully, they would be able to use the electric assistance, yes.
Okay, so a lot like the electric-assist bikes that I see downtown Cedar Rapids all the time? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah. Two questions that I have. What are the weights of these bikes?
Um, I'm not sure about that, actually. They, I know they're fairly heavy, but they would be fairly maneuverable. We were watching videos on, they are easy to get around.
Are they, are they five-speed, 10-speed, or three speeds?
I'm pretty sure the first trike is five-speed. The second is, I think, the same, yes.
Okay. All right, so that kind of helps us with any weight issue. And the only reason why I was asking is, I used to own a recumbent bike. Actually, I had two, and one of them was just a little heavier than I liked, so I spent more time on the other one. So I just got to thinking about that in terms of utilization by senior citizens. And then the other question, that maybe this is more with the YMCA needing to think about this, is this is rental equipment, in essence, for no charge. And, you know, is there some kind of a waiver that would, the person checking it out need to...
I would say yes. We would have to go into more detail with Brook and the YMCA to do that, but I would say yes for that.
I think this is just a great idea, because it will aid for those that are mobility-challenged to have some outdoor experience. I think that's great. Thanks.
Other questions?
I just wanted to clarify, within the grant, we wrote that the bikes we purchased through the city and donated to the YMCA, but there would be some language in there that doesn't require the people that rent them to have a YMCA membership, because it is an asset of the city.
Okay. This kind of is timely with our survey that's out in the community right now on whether or not we're an age-friendly community, and we're trying to be diverse and welcoming to all people. So this is certainly one way to promote that, so, yes.
I just have a question here. I'm just questioning the ability if people wanted to ride these in the Uptown District with these being stored so far off-site from the Uptown area. Is there any other consideration of putting a couple of them in the Uptown area so they could be utilized in other areas rather than so remotely to the YMCA?
Um, we'd certainly be willing. We would have to discuss that with Brooke as well, because she is a partner in this project, just the same as us.
Yeah, and the library has expressed interest in including a program like this in the new library. We haven't talked about where they would be stored or any of those logistics, but just they were interested in being a part of a program like this.
Thank you. Okay, other questions? Thanks to all of you for your work on this.
All right, thank you for your time, guys. Really appreciate it.
Thanks for the presentation. Okay, moving on with our consent agenda. Well, I guess I may maybe ask a question of the staff. So what would be the next step on this?
We would place it on the next city council agenda for discussion, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so just so people are aware, there's a forthcoming discussion on it, okay? Thank you. Moving on with the consent agenda, under Administrative Services, the first item marked is A7. Are there any items prior to that that anyone would like to discuss? Okay, then, A7. Receive and File Memo Regarding 2021 City Council Meeting Schedule. Is that Rachel?
Yes. So this is for the meeting dates in 2021. The last set of meetings in December would fall on December 21st and December 23rd, with that being right before Christmas Eve. Just curious if council would still want to hold that on Thursday or just have the Tuesday meeting?
Any preferences on that? Go ahead, Renee.
Thank you. I think the likelihood is that when it got to that date, we would probably want to cancel it, but I hesitate to do it this early in case there's some reason that we would need the two meetings and then we weren't advertised. So I'm totally open to the idea, but don't see why we would need to do it this far in advance.
Is there a reason why we need to do it this far in advance?
Nope, we can always change it later. I was just, came up when I put them together, so.
Yep, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I'm looking at my calendar here, and it looks like Tuesday's the 22nd, and that's the 21st, or am I... And then Thursday's the 24th? Or am I off?
These would be 2021 dates. I'm not sure.
Oh, never mind. I'll go mute again.
2020.
Rachel is really on the ball. Okay, other comments or thoughts on that? Is everyone okay with waiting to reset that meeting till a later date? Or are there any objections to that? Okay, I think we have a consensus that we'll just hold off on that. Rachel? The next item is A8. Is that Lon or Amal?
It's me, Your Honor.
Yes.
So as we are awaiting the FEMA Public Assistance Grant and for the city to continue to be able to meet its obligation, staff is recommending short-term financing, such as a line of credit to cash flow the duration debris collection project. We are committed to three major service contracts with SDR, Debris Tech, and Windiling for the collection and disposal of debris in a right-of-way. And those contracts are exceeding 20 million in total. And we're estimating the waterway collection project to be anywhere between 15 and 20 million. To update you on where we at, we are a week away from completing the right-of-way collection and starting the water, the right-of-way collection and starting the waterway one. And we are working with Dattle Basin, our consultants, on the proper documentation for FEMA review. And so far, we've been using cash on hand in capital project fund, and however, we want to make sure we don't run into a cash situation. So this resolution is to start the process of giving us the ability to borrow funds when we need them. I'll take any questions, if you have any for me or for Lon or Ryan.
I have a question. Are the... The right-of-way debris removal and the waterway debris removal, are those two separate submittals for reimbursement? So they're not tied together, that they'll be submitted and reimbursed separately? Okay, so we're one week away from completing right-of-way removals, and then the process is we complete submitting all our information for that. And then, once that's done, it's reviewed by FEMA, and then there's a reimbursement?
We're using this breakdown as a strategy to, because the way that grant works, you, after you complete a project, you get reimbursed for. We're breaking it out so we can get reimbursed sooner.
Okay. And tell us again what the estimate is for that, for the first submittal?
So it's exceeding 20 million.
Okay.
This is just the service contract's part of that project.
Okay. All right, questions from council? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, does FEMA reimburse the city for interest cost?
No.
For expense when they have to borrow money to fund a project like this?
No, we've checked with them, and they said, no, they don't cover that.
Okay.
But today, I learned good news that there is a bill in the House that if it goes through, it might take away our local share.
So it would increase the FEMA reimbursement to...
It will increase it, yes, to 90%.
90%, and then the remaining 10% is from the state?
From the state.
Yeah. Just making sure that's clear to everybody, okay? Any other questions for, go ahead, Grant?
Yeah, just so I've got it in my thinking correctly. So we haven't made any submittals for reimbursement to FEMA up to this point. Is that correct?
We did. We were uploading information on the grants portal as we go, and we've been collecting the invoices and all the documentations that are needed for review.
Okay, but they don't move to reimbursement until the entire project is over. Is that correct?
Until the entire project is reviewed, and the way they review it, they look for the data to support that project. After they review it, they approve it, and then they obligate the money, then we request the reimbursement from the state.
So is there an expected timeframe when we would anticipate receiving reimbursements?
After everything completed and uploaded to the grants portal, FEMA process takes six to eight weeks, and then the state process also takes six weeks. So we're looking at 90 to 120 days before we get reimbursed.
Okay, thank you. That was what I was really wanting to understand. Thank you.
Other questions from Al on this? So the resolution on Thursday would be to set the public hearing for the loan agreement. Okay? Anything else to add, Amal?
That's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is A9, Resolution Approving The Annual Urban Renewal Report For Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2020.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to go ahead and cover both A9 and A10 in this presentation. So A10, also the resolution approving the certification of tax increment financing, TIF indebtedness to the Lynn County Auditor's Office for fiscal year 2021, 2022 collection. On the next slide, I've kind of laid out the agenda. This is similar to the presentation I did last year, but I always think it's a really good refresher. So I'm going to cover what is tax increment financing TIF, what the TIF obligation instruments are, and then the different reporting requirements that come with utilization of TIF, including Gatsby 77, the annual urban renewal report, and the TIF indebtedness certification. And so, starting with what is tax increment finance, I like to go with the most simplest example of, imagine a piece of ground, and maybe that piece of ground, for simplicity, we'll say you're paying $1 in property tax. And then a developer comes along, buys this property, builds a building on it, and then it now is paying $100 in property tax. The increment then created would be $99. However, it's also notable to say that not 100% of that $99 is available for tax increment financing, because there are certain levies, including debt service for the different jurisdictions, as well as the property plant and equipment levy for the school districts. So for instance, as I was running numbers for this past year, $40 approximately was what some of the total tax rates were, only about $32 is actually eligible for TIF. And then on the next slide, there are three different TIF obligation instruments that can be used in order to utilize TIF. One is a standard rebate agreement, which is the agreement you typically see passed at city council, the long process where we amend the plan. And then we follow up, I should say, there's public hearing. We amend the plan, and then we pass a development agreement. So that's the standard rebate agreement. And then we have internal loans, where sometimes we upfront money, and we will utilize an internal loan to pay that back. So for instance, we do this with our administrative support services, where we are reimbursing ourselves for staff time for the contribution to Medco or the Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance contribution. Or like we recently did with Mojo Properties, where we provided an incentive upfront for the elevator, and then we're paying ourselves back via an internal loan. And then the last one, of course, are bonds notes. We did one of these for the hotel project, $4.5 million grant there. We also use these sometimes for infrastructure projects, where we might put in a road like Tower Terrace, and then development will occur along Tower Terrace Road. So those are the three different instruments that have to be in place in order to utilize TIF. And then here is your list of required reporting. Gatsby 77 requires a financial note disclosure, so we actually send letters out to all jurisdictions, city, county, school, that we are utilizing TIF dollars for. Urban Renewal Report reports on all TIF obligations, payments, and projects. The TIF indebtedness certification, which is how we actually request the dollars for the next fiscal year. And then there are continuing disclosure requirements required by SEC. So there is like a listing of development agreements that is included in our annual disclosure report filing that gets posted on Emma. And so, going through Gatsby 77 on the next slide, there are really two frames of thinking on this. You can either say it's diverted TIF revenue, or you can look at it as new revenue that was created that these institutions will see in future times. So in the city, we like to say, the but-for test that we like to do with development agreements, these revenues would not have been created but for the city's incentive. So out of the dollars that actually were expended in this last fiscal year, fiscal year 1920, the total amount in TIF utilized was $3.5 million. Out of that amount, City Of Marion was 1.3 million, or approximately 38%. Lynn Mar, 817,000. Lynn County, 606, and it's there on the screen. I won't read them all to you, but City Of Marion is by far the largest share. Next is the Urban Renewal Report. This is just kind of a screenshot to show you that the utilization right now is mostly in the Collins Road. 67% Collins Road, 16% Central Corridor, 11% West Tower. 67% Collins Road, 16% Central Corridor, 11% West Tower Terrace. And these are the different urban renewal areas. On the next slide, digging into the actual expenditures that kind of back up those numbers. As far as rebates are concerned, during fiscal year 20, we paid on 25 different rebate agreements, total amount of $783,752. It is a little bit less than fiscal year 19. I will say there were three or four, actually, may have been a few more, that we did delay and actually pay in fiscal year 21 there, spring, because of the delay in property tax due dates. But you can see we paid on 25 rebate agreements in fiscal year 20. It was 21 in 2019. As far as internal loans, 276,824 versus 272,284 last year. Bonds notes, 2.4 million versus 2.2 million. And then the other is the LMI, low to moderate income. We do have some set aside dollars from Winslow Road when you do tax increment financing on a residential area. The state requires you to set aside dollars for low to moderate income. So we did have a couple of projects, bus shelters and the civil rights grant that were done in fiscal year 20. And then just as a little bit of detail, here's a list of the larger, starting with the largest and decreasing from there, different developers that we have made rebate payments to. The lighter blue is Collins Road, the darker blue, Central Corridor, and the green is of course West Tower Terrace. So just to list a couple of them, Legacy Manufacturing, 176,000. Arbor at Lyndale Trail, 75,113. ESCO Group, 66,787, and they decrease from there. And then switching over to the TIF indebtedness certification. So remember, the urban renewal report is a past-looking report, so it looks at the prior fiscal year. The TIF indebtedness certification actually looks forward. So we kind of skipped fiscal year 21 in reporting and we're now looking at fiscal year 2022 and saying, hey, this is what we're going to request for next year. So looking again at rebate agreements, fiscal year 21, we requested dollars for 30. In fiscal year 22, we are requesting dollars for 34 agreements. Total is approximately 1.6 million for rebate agreements. Internal loans is increasing just slightly from 304,000 to 305,000. And the bonds notes, you should be happy to see, actually decreased. And that is largely due to the refinance, still around 2.5 million, but is slightly less despite the fact that we did add the Irish Drive extension bond from last spring. And then again, giving you a little bit more detail. Here are, starting with the largest and decreasing, again, the the lighter blue is Collins Road, urban renewal area, dark blue, Central Corridor, and the green is West Tower Terrace. So largest, Legacy Manufacturing, 262,495. Genesis Equities, two different agreements, 233,832. Squaw Creek Crossing, 164,703. And these are all just estimates. Actual tax rates will determine the amount. Hopefully, I'm not going too quickly for you guys. I feel like I'm talking a little fast. And then this again is by percentage. You can see for fiscal year 21, 22, 73% Collins Road, whereas we were looking at 67% on the other side. 16% Central Corridor, 9% West Tower Terrace, and the other two are very minimal. And here is a forecast I tried to put together here. I'm going to let you know there are numerous assumptions that play into this forecast. For instance, we have to estimate tax rates, we have to estimate assessed values. I only included in here projects that are either completed or are under construction. So any projects, you know, if you think about future phases of like Squaw Creek Crossing or some of the larger developments, until the building actually started construction, I don't really have a very good take on what the valuation looks like. But if you look at this forecast, you can see there's a peak right now in fiscal year 2023. And it's hovering between 4 million and 5 million throughout this forecast. And if I switch to the next page, you'll see it's because more projects are coming on than are expiring and they're coming on at higher values. So here's a forecast of some of the debts that are expiring. Internal loan for ESCO Group, this is in West Tower Terrace, 40,000. These are by date rather than by value. The ESCO Group rebate itself will be falling off with final payment fiscal year 2022 at 75,000. Pup Electric, approximately 30,000 in 2022. Freund Vector, also 2022, at 20,000, and so forth. And then on the next, and my last and final slide, I actually list some of the debts that are starting. And again, remember, these are all estimates. Genesis Equities, Sixth Avenue Project, 200,000. GLD Properties in 2022, 66,000. Squaw Creek Crossing in 2022, 35,000. 2020 AGO Bond, 35,000. Internal Loan Mojo Properties, 30,000. Integrity, 30,000, and so forth. And with that, I will open up to any questions you have surrounding the reports.
Thank you. Questions? I guess it was very clear. Thank you. That was a good report. And I was going to ask you about how we can see when particular projects would start paying full freight. So you provided that. I think that's, I'm not sure that we've ever seen that before, so.
My goal next year is, at the very beginning, to provide an actual concrete example instead of the baseline example.
But this is very helpful. Okay, yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah. Leanne, would it be possible to get your, share your slide deck with us just so we can marry that up against the the information that is in the attachment for the, for our council memo here?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Other questions for Leanne? Okay. Thank you, Leanne. Under public safety, there is an item that is not marked for discussion. Any questions on that one? Moving on to engineering, on page three, nothing is marked. Any items on that page? Next page, there are a couple more items for engineering that are not marked.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not sure what page exactly you're on, but
Four?
Engineering, E5?
Yes.
I had a question for Mike on that one.
Go ahead, Will.
And that would be, so we're doing a change order for $32,000 because the dirt was not good dirt there. Can you explain that to us, please?
Yep, so I have a slide deck there ready for you. So this is A Avenue. As you know, we had to split this project into two different phases. We were under construction with the west phase under HO hit. And so we lost about a month on that project. In order to keep the project going, we don't really have good dry days when we get into the fall. And so that August timeline that we lost is the best time to dry that dirt out and have good subgrade. So as part of this project, we reconstructed the sanitary sewer that went down the center of A Avenue. And if we don't put in good material, the street's going to fail in the future. So if we would have put the wet material back in, we would have had settlement issues and the street that we installed would have failed much sooner than we wanted to. And so we actually had a contingency item in the bid documents, but we overran that by quite a bit. So it's a bid item that was in the documents. It's just the fact that the quantity overran the amount that we anticipated because of the month delay. That was the best month for drying out weather. As you know, August was very dry after the storm because we didn't have much rain for quite a while and it was quite an issue with all the debris in the right of way.
Okay, thank you for that, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Can I answer your question, Will?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else have questions on that item? Okay, on to community development. F1 is not marked. Does anyone have questions on F1? Not, we'll move on to F2.
Your Honor, if you see on the screen, we're looking at setting the date for the public hearing of December 3rd for the first map amendment related to the new zoning code. As you can see, we're looking at taking and rezoning Ward 2. So all the property there would be the subject of the public hearing and the rezoning. So we'll try to get some press on this. Obviously, difficult to notice every property owner in this entire area. So we'll try and get some press coverage out there to provide appropriate notice. So we'll do a staff report prior to the public hearing as well.
Any questions for Tom?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Will.
Tom, can you get, I guess maybe others won't want it, just me. But that, this in a hard copy, instead of on my computer, it'd just be easier for me to look at on paper before the public hearing, obviously, not, don't need it before Thursday, just before the public hearing.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else wants one, too?
I can send a PDF if someone wants just a standard PDF, then, or I can leave hard copies in the council office.
I would prefer a hard copy, please.
No problem.
Thank you.
Also on December 3rd, we'll have a public hearing regarding a conference of plan amendment and rezoning for the existing Y site at the corner of 10th Avenue and 31st Street. I did not include a copy or an illustration of the proposed buildings. I'm going to leave you all in suspense, but the location is here. We will discuss it prior to the public hearing. You'll get a copy of the development proposal and the complete, I think you did have it in your actual packet, I just didn't put it on the screen. The Planning Commission did did take a peek at this last, at their last meeting, we held a public hearing. There were a number of people that signed a petition against the proposed rezoning, but not a lot of folks spoke. And I think that's just a simple struggle that we're going to have when it comes to a comfort level of people speaking on behalf of a subject like this through Zoom. We realize this and have noticed it. In some instances and some other areas, we haven't had that issue. There's been plenty of folks that voice their opinion. But just, I'm concerned that a lot of people are just not voicing their opinion on this, but they did sign a petition. If you recall, this proposal is to build three large apartment buildings, approximately 50 units each. It's a substantial change to the neighborhood. Staff was supportive of the request going to P&amp;Z. P&amp;Z was supportive of moving to council. So it's a good project. It's a great infill project. And it's going to serve the community, I think, really well.
Okay, for the discussion, I'm going to turn this over to the mayor for ten.
Yeah, I actually did listen to that very long P&amp;Z meeting that night because I thought everything on the agenda was worthwhile. It ended up being a three-hour meeting, so it was a long meeting. I don't recall anybody even calling in on this project. However, a lot of the discussion I recall, Tom, was about the increased traffic flow on 31st Street. And the one question, if you want to tell the developers, the one question I will be asking them about at this public hearing is going to be why there is not one of these outlets on 10th Avenue, why are they both exiting on 31st Street? I mean, 10th Avenue can accommodate traffic, I think, easier than 31st Street and splitting them up between the two would make sense. And I think the project would accommodate that. So I will be asking that question, at least from myself. So other than that, yeah, P&amp;Z passed it. They approved it. So anybody else have any other questions or comments?
I do.
This item?
I do.
Will, go ahead.
Yeah, I had the same question that you had, Steve, of why there's not a outlet onto 10th. And I have talked to just one person that lives on the road behind. And to your point, Tom, there was not a lot of people that joined Zoom-wise. And according to her, it's because that a lot of the neighborhood is elderly and they don't do Zoom. So I know there's some pushback from what I've heard anyway, from the neighborhoods around there, on 31st and behind it on Cardinal.
Yeah, this is one of the projects that we did emphasize to the developer that it was important for them to do a public meeting prior to the Planning Commission meeting. So they did hold a meeting on their own.
Yes.
Obviously, it's difficult. I think they held it in the parking lot. I don't know what the weather was like. Staff does not generally attend those meetings because we don't want there to be any type of preconceived notion that it's a joint project of some sort. So this is something we ask that the developers do. We like to get a report out if they can provide it on how it went. But anyway, that's something that did happen. So sometimes that helps. But obviously, I had the same concerns you did, Will. I think there's, the population, I don't think is near the area, probably real comfortable with Zoom, so.
Yeah, and I heard about the meeting that was held with the neighborhood that there was a lot of elderly folks that had to sit in their cars so they couldn't hear quite well because they were doing distancing and they couldn't stand out in a parking lot for a long period of time. So they really didn't, from what I've been told, there was a lot of them that really didn't understand or hear what was actually going on. So, and there was some concern I heard, too, about drainage along the ball field behind Cardinal Avenue, that they're having issues now and hopefully that would take care of the issue. They're worried that it's going to be more issues if there's a development there.
Well, we'll be sure to hit the high points on that as we talk about the project. There is quite a bit of green space being proposed as a part of the project. And just so the council is aware, to Steve's point, I think the next morning, Mike, the city engineer Bartlow, had sent a note down saying we probably need to get some traffic analysis completed for the project before we get to the council. So that's already underway. Any other, Renee?
Yeah, I was just going to piggyback on something that Will brought up. I was, you know, I see it's a pretty dense, pretty densely populated area and I'm just wondering what the water table shows in terms of losing a lot of green space to concrete and asphalt. So that'd be, that'd be something else we'd like a little more detail on when we hear more about this project, just to ensure we're not causing more issues than are already there.
Yeah, I think they'll cover that. I recall, and there is a lot of green space on this project. I think we do actually have sent to us a layout of where the buildings are and the amount of green space that is on this project. So it is actually, you know, quite a bit more than some other projects that are, have this kind of housing on it. So I think that can probably be managed. But the traffic flow on 31st Street, because that's a connect, you know, connecting road from Highway 100 all the way up to 29th Avenue. So that's been my major concern. We all know something is going to get developed on this six and a half acres eventually. It's just a matter of what fits in there and what can be makes sense from a dollars and cents standpoint for the developer. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So we'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Under library, there are two items that are not marked. Any questions or comments on those? Okay, the next part of the agenda, nothing is marked. Any? Okay, the next part of the agenda, nothing is marked. Any items in particular, I guess.
We did have one.
F1, and then I'll let the mayor pro temp handle that.
Okay, F1 is a we'll be talking about a public hearing for an amendment to the Marion Future Land Use Plan. This will be brought by the Midwest Development Company. Tom, do you have a quick update on that? This is what we saw back in June, right?
Yeah, I think the council probably is pretty familiar with this this area. It's east of Albinet Road. The proposal went from duplexes to seventeen, ten unit buildings, the stacked units just east Albinet, south of the Alliance substation there, as you can see on the map. This again, that one, there was not a meeting prior to the original request going through, so a lot of confusion. For this for this proposal, we did ask that they meet with the neighborhood. They did hold a neighborhood meeting. We also expanded our notifications out quite a bit. We did still have folks in attendance that weren't 100% supportive of the project. The developer did lay out some good visuals that illustrate how the view shed of the existing neighborhood would see what's being proposed. I will say, and I said it before, that we understand things changed. This plat was originally, the preliminary plat was originally completed in in 2010. Here we are 20 years later, or I'm sorry, 10 years later. Things do change. We've said this a number of times. The worst thing that could happen is we a rezoning would take place or an amendment to the development plan such as this would take place when the development directly adjacent to it has has occurred. They're not really ready to pull the trigger on this project right away. And so, you know, they're still a ways away from existing development. So in our in our mind, now now is the time to change these types of plans if you're going to do it, and it can be done appropriately. Not when the development has already occurred directly adjacent to it. So we contend that that's this is a good thing. And and we're supportive of the project. The Planning Commission was supportive of the project. They did move around some things. I think they have one roadway that's got a little touches the flood plain, but there's certainly no buildings and they they did reduce the number of units, I think, by one building as as part of the project. So we'll hold a public hearing. I'm sure you'll hear from the neighborhood on on this project and we'll we'll just go from there. The I think the full packet kind of goes into a lot of the details that surround this project.
Tom, let me ask one question before it leaves my head. And that is when that comp plan was done 10 years ago, was Albinet Road designed in 2010 the way it is today for going through that area?
I believe that it was a part of the conference of plan to always extend down to 7th Avenue.
Okay.
With the preliminary plat, definitely, when the preliminary plat was approved, Albinet Road was included in that preliminary plat.
Okay, thanks.
So you're not seeing the full preliminary plat here. I think you're seeing the preliminary plat would take the road and continue that further down to the south.
Okay, that, yep. Okay, anybody else have any questions on this? So we'll be talking about this is a resolution to Thursday night to set a public hearing for for December 17. Okay, see no questions. We'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Under regular agenda administrative services. We're on page six. Nothing is marked. Anything anyone would like to discuss? On the public services, B1 is not marked. B2 and B3 are marked. And I see we have Ryan here. Do you have a presentation to make, Ryan, or?
Go ahead.
Your Honor, City Council, items one and two, or I'm sorry, two and three are related. City staff did release a request for proposals for emergency waterway debris removal. We had two respondents. The first respondent was LA Disaster Recovery. They did come in lower than the other respondent, Southern Disaster Recovery. LA Disaster Recovery came in at $25 per cubic yard. Southern Disaster Recovery came in at $39.35 per cubic yard. Both were very good proposals, way under estimates, preliminary estimates had that at about $70 to $80 per cubic yard. However, after receiving the proposals, both the city attorney and city staff reviewed them. We are going to move to declare LA Disaster Recovery as a nonresponsible bidder. Reasons being is that they did not provide very certain things in the RP that we asked for. The first thing was to verify surety. We did receive a copy of surety, but it was not legitimate. Second thing, they did not meet other requirements RFP, such as inspections of the waterway, as well as the fact that we have have had problems with them in the past couple of months with illegal dumping activities. So we are moving with item number two to declare them as nonresponsive to this process. Any questions on that? I don't know if the city attorney has anything to add.
Questions?
Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would add that today I did finally receive a call back from someone purporting to be from their insurance company. We originally received a letter from a Christina Aguilera from the insurance company who wrote her title in the letter as broker slash agent, but we could not find any such information online. Online she is listed as a tax preparer. And today I received a phone call from someone named Edward purporting to be from the same company, although he has a Florida phone number and the company is located in California. He did say he was working with LA Disaster Recovery and said that the letter we received was an error. The letter listed a bond amount. It listed a bond date that it had been obtained and it listed a bond title. Upon further looking, that particular bond, that particular bond type is only issued by one particular company in California. It's not valid in any state other than California, Washington, and Oregon. And they have no record of this insurance company or this disaster recovery company. So that was all very suspicious, along with the spelling of the word through being T H R U in the letter. Things like that just kind of stand out to me when I receive official letters that have that type of spelling. Today, Mr. Edward Aguilar reached out to me and said that that was a clerical error from his office, that this Christina Aguilera is only a CPA and that they would provide me information for the company they were working with. As I pulled into the parking lot this afternoon, I received a message from him that said they were going to be working with Skogman to provide a bond for this project. But I still find all of that very suspicious upon reviewing more of the reviews online for the company. At least one review mentioned that they had an issue where they had to make a claim against insurance and the insurance had lapsed. And so I have some major concerns about the information I'm getting. I have not had a chance to call Skogman. As I said, I received the messages I pulled into the parking lot. So I will do that before Thursday, but in addition to that, and just the fact that they did not follow what we had asked in the RFP and the fact that we've had to we've had to address issues of illegal dumping with them already, leaves me very concerned. They also provided, I believe, part of their RFP was for work that would not be FEMA reimbursable. And so I would have major concerns about whether or not they would follow the rules set forth by FEMA.
Okay, so then B3 is.
B3, you can go to the next side, Terrell. And B3, this is the proposed resolution awarding Southern Disaster Recovery with the Waterway Debris Removal Project. Preliminary estimates, we did have this estimated at $70 per cubic yard. That came off of other state contracts for similar debris removal projects. And so even with SDR's bid at 39, 35, it's still a very competitive bid when compared to other activities like this. And so with that, we are recommending moving forward with SDR. We've had very good luck working with them during this disaster recovery period. Estimated completion time about 130 days. They will be ready to mobilize as soon as the city council does award them with the RFP. If the council decides to move forward with that on Thursday, they would start Friday.
Okay. Questions on that?
Question.
Yes, go ahead.
I I think as we move forward with this, Ryan, one thing that'll help us is when we is to kind of give us a little bit of a scope or definition of what is going to be covered by these waterways, because obviously, they're going to be in a lot of areas that are certainly needed, but I don't know exactly when you talk about waterways, where they're going to be. And if I start seeing equipment or or people start asking me, are they going to clean this area up or that area? I'm going to say I really don't know what that definition or the scope of that is. So are we going to have a map? That might.
We do have maps.
Help citizens say, here's the waterways that these people will be in.
Very detailed maps. We have this broken up in three different phases. With each sectional way of basically, we got three different watersheds that we're working with Indian Creek, Squaw Creek, and what we call the Dry Creek watershed. And then we have sectional maps of each area that includes not only access points for the contractor to get into, but also what exactly is eligible for their work? What in the waterway can they take and what they cannot take? So we have all that information. Be happy to share it with you. As well as the schedule, so.
Okay, thanks.
Other question? Yes, go ahead. Great.
Ryan, do you, so just looking at the more conservative estimate of 300,000 cubic yards. I just typed in my calculator, we're at nearly $12 million. Is how much of this is FEMA reimbursable?
So as of right now, 75% is eligible for FEMA reimbursement. And then 10% from the state, just like everything else.
All right, go ahead. Yeah, I was being polite. Sorry. Okay, my question, Ryan, is can we receive a descriptor of how they're going to conduct the work? So you mentioned access points. And so are there going to, is there going to be equipment in the in in the flow channels?
Yeah.
Getting material?
Yeah.
Okay, I maybe just not necessarily now, but if there can be a descriptor of how they will will do that work, because I think that'll be a point of inquiry that ultimately, you know, our citizens are going to see that going on. And so, you know, they'll be wondering, is that the proper way to do it?
Yeah, and so essentially, we're we're taking these guidelines. These are best management practices that we're going to incorporate from past NRCS cleanups that we've done as well as FEMA cleanups. And so we'll definitely share that with the the council and citizens as well, schedules and maps and things and whatnot. First step, let's find out who that contractor is going to be, and then we can sit down and finalize what that's going to look like.
Thank you.
So when Amal mentioned that the bill going through Congress, that might increase the amount recoverable recoverable from FEMA, is this
Yes.
fall into that too?
I mean, it's it's as Amal said, it's something that I we just discovered today. It's it's there. And basically, it would adjust the federal reimbursement to 90%, and then you'd have the state reimbursement at 10%. But that has a ways to go yet, so.
Any other questions for Ryan on those two items? Thank you, Ryan. Under parks, there is one item that is not marked. Any discussion on that? Let's move on to engineering. Mike, are you with us?
Your Honor, so the first item is the combined public hearing that we will continue for the library bid package. So this will be continued. The second is a public hearing regarding the 35th and 7th Avenue Traffic Signal and Turn Lane Improvements. If you can go to the next slide, Terrell. The the project that we're talking about, so it's replacing the the signal that's there. Taking away two left turns, so no northbound to westbound or eastbound and northbound movements, and then extending Linden Drive to the south. And one more slide, Terrell. So we did receive five bids for this project, the low bid coming from Rachi Construction at $749,582.47, which was 96.64% of the engineer's estimate. It has a late start date of 6/21/21. The reason why that is so late is it is going to take six months plus to get the signals in, and that way they can do all the project at once rather than try and keep the existing signals functioning while making the improvements. There are 55 working days and $1,000 per day in liquidated damages. And there was some funds that the DOT granted us through the Traffic Safety Improvement Program. There were some portions of it that they did not find were eligible, so it's not the full half million dollars that we would be normally getting, but they are paying for a portion of it. So we'll have that public hearing and then E3 is accepting the bid and awarding the contract to Rachi Construction.
Okay, questions on that? Mike, can we go back to E1? So is there an actual action item then on this?
No, no, we'll keep the public hearing open until December 17th, when we'll have each one of those items.
Okay, so but we're not there's not, there's no action on Thursday, but we don't have to take a vote to keep it open or anything like that?
No, we'll just continue the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, next item.
So E4 is approving the contract in bond with Rachi Construction regarding the 10th and 10th intersection. So that was in the amount of $543,934.94.
Any questions on that? What's the projected start date?
That one was.
Spring?
It has a start date of June 21st of 21 with 35 working days. That's based on when the schools are planned to close for the summer, so that date may change depending on what happens this winter with school. Because that's a complete closure while we do that intersection.
Okay. Questions on that? All right, next item.
So the next one is applying for approximately $2.5 million from the Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization or the CNPO. This will be swap funds. We we were awarded in the past 903,000 in the draft tip. We applied in April of 19 and did not receive anything. We applied in November of 19 for 2.8 million, and that's where we got the 903,000. And so now we're applying to get additional money. So this would be 7th Avenue from 12th to 22nd Street. And this would pay up to 80% of the project cost. I think with this amount, we're only about 75% funded from the CNPO, but obviously that will help pay for the project. Last time we applied, we were the highest scoring project and the most complete application because we do have the preliminary plans done. But the money instead went to either end of Tower Terrace and I-380 for the divergent diamond interchange to Hiawatha and Cedar Rapids. So hopefully, this time we can get more of those funds.
Okay. Questions? All right, next item.
Next is E6. So this is the property south of 29th Avenue. There's an existing farmhouse that's there and about 10 acres. The property owner is required to connect to the city sewer. But they do not want to pay the entire hookup fee. That would be for the entire 10 acres. But they do not want to pay the entire hookup fee. That would be for the entire 10 acres. Instead, they would like to just pay for one acre. Based on the letter they submitted. We have done this in the past under different ordinances. But this specific ordinance does not necessarily specify that it's just one acre charge. So item E6 is just received file and discussing the request to defer a portion of the sanitary hookup fee. And E7 then is based on staff's recommendation to develop a memorandum of agreement with the property owner. That that hookup fee will be deferred until such time as development does occur. And then will be charged at that rate. For sanitary fees, there is an increase every year. So when it actually develops, we would charge the then rate.
Okay. Questions on that?
Quick question on it?
Go ahead, Will.
Is that agreement going to transfer to the new owner? And then if it sells again to the new owner after that?
Yep, we'll, we'll tie it to the, the land.
Okay, just making sure.
Technically, it's there now. It's, it's an ordinance that's in place. It's just. Normally there on some other ones, there's a contingency and the city engineer can make modifications, but because that. Disclaimer isn't in this ordinance, bringing it before council because we're modifying an ordinance with a memorandum of agreement. So legal will review it and everything as we develop it. The other option is to make the, the homeowner pay for the full amount now, even though a lot of it, as you can see, is just a farm field. So they're not generating any sanitary flow from that.
Yeah. Okay. Is that clear to everyone? Okay, E8.
E8 is our legal. Opinion based on the Luccor Bridge discussion that we had previously. This also went through the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. That committee gave a recommendation to do nothing other than apply for CNPO funding to build the bridge at this time. So I won't, the, the legal opinion was in your packet. And Kara can answer any questions that you have regarding her opinion.
Questions? Anything to add? Oh, I'm sorry, Renee, go ahead. I didn't see you. Sorry.
Just a question about existing markings there and I didn't have time to drive by like I had hoped. Do we have it marked for bikes at least currently? I know there's signage, but is there painting on the street for bikes?
So what there is north of the bridge, there's actually a dedicated bike lane on the portion that was improved as part of the Luccor improvements. And there's a sign that says bike lane ends may use full lane. Bikes can technically be on any road that they want to be on, other than ones that have a minimum speed limit such as interstates. So they don't necessarily need to have bike markings. Eventually, when the side pass are in, there won't be a need to have any on-street markings. Those that don't feel safe using the, the side path. That will get them connected to the rest of the area and those that feel they can just ride in the road will continue to ride in the road.
Just wondering if we were to paint on the road for bikers like we have in other situations, if it would help. Awareness.
I don't know that that's necessarily a concern is bicycles using the bridge. Sure, anything can be painted. I don't know that it's going to change the situation.
Okay.
And again, it did go to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee and they recommended do nothing.
And one other question for you, Mike, because you had mentioned in, or maybe Kara mentioned it in her letter, but I think it came from you. A W11-2 sign?
Yes.
There wasn't a picture of what one is, but you said that it states that that warns drivers about possible pedestrians. That was discussed as well and, and not thought to be prudent. Is that true?
That's correct. So a N11-2 is basically just a pedestrian. It's a, a diamond with a pedestrian on it is all that is. Normally you see him with the, the arrow underneath him and it's at a crosswalk. So it's just a sign with a pedestrian on it is all it is.
Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a little further to comment on that. When I saw the sign sent to me, I recognized it as one I've seen before and. I thought it was a sign that indicated that something was safe for pedestrians. And so that was actually a, a learning moment for me. But I thought that that would be very misleading as well, particularly to children who have maybe never taken driver's ed and. I know with my own kids, we spent a lot of time on traffic safety this year when we were on trails and, and doing a lot of walking when we couldn't go to parks. And so my kids recognize the sign of a figure walking. If it doesn't have some sort of indicator that that's a bad thing to do. They see that as, okay, this is a safe place for me to be. And that was my concern with that particular sign.
Okay, I guess, and I do want to say, and I think that it was Ryan's crew, I'm not sure, but the day after we had this discussion, the trees were trimmed and, and it was. Remarkably better. I also spoke with the resident who had reached out. She noticed it as well. So I, I would certainly ask that we continue to keep up with that. But I still feel like in addition to the recommendation for CNPO funding. I don't know if we would also simultaneously put this on our own CIP list of projects to review and when we prioritize, have another discussion then. But I still feel like we need something there because we all acknowledge people are going to cross. Whether they should or they shouldn't, and we should do something to protect them. I understand legal's point about not wanting to encourage it. But I feel like there's still got to be something more we can do, whether it's the rapid flashing beacon or. Something about, you know, crossing at your own risk, but something that if a driver sees pedestrians cross at your own risk, that lets drivers know there could be pedestrians. They shouldn't be there, but something. I don't know that I have the answer, but I don't, I'm not content with not doing anything. I guess that's where I'm at.
Go ahead, Grant.
So I'm, I'm not sure that my position has radically changed. One of the things on a different. Walkway related matter that I, I've learned is. Linmar, I think, has a two-mile distance. For I think middle school and high school kids to walk to school. They don't provide bus service. And I think it's a mile for elementary kids. Well, if you go, if, I think we all know where Indian Creek School is, if we go north and slightly northeast. I, I think that's all Hunter's Ridge and some of those other developments. And conceivably, there would be. On nice days, perhaps some student foot traffic. Now, in this day and age with every adolescent kid having a car, I would love to see more foot traffic, but. I just, what I'm just concerned about is. The, the legal logic I get. But I think the practical matter is there's going to be pedestrian usage on that bridge, no matter what we do. And I'm, I kind of want to bias. I, my thought goes to biasing. Our consideration to alerting drivers that they may be there. As a safety measure, because the pedestrian is unprotected against a motor vehicle. And I don't think we're ever going to stop pedestrian traffic over that bridge. So I'm, I'm still stuck. Sorry, Kara. I'm, I'm stuck deep in the mud in my original position.
Other thoughts or comments on that? Okay. Seeing them to move on. Community development. F1 is not marked for discussion. Any? Questions or comments on that? Okay, we'll move on to F2. We'll have Mayor Potem handle that one.
Tom, are you out there?
Yeah, sorry. So this is our resolution approving the final plat for Bowman Meadows Sixth Edition. Everything's in order and should be good to go.
Any questions on this, on this item, F2? Grant?
Yeah, Tom, this is, this is just to the north and slightly to the west of that other. Development that we just discussed this afternoon.
That, that's correct. Yep.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, I, I would suggest, you know, as, as we, you know, we're talking, this, this has been plotted for a long time. But I think if you go out there, make sure you have that map of how all this is located when we start talking about that seventh edition. I went out there yesterday and I'm sitting there and I did not have my map with me or a laptop to look at a map. And you really need to have that with you to kind of have your bearings on where that seventh edition is. Exactly where this edition is and then where the addition is, it's going to have the duplexes or condos, whatever they're going to be called. So once you drive out there without the map, I kind of lost my bearings. So again, I suggest if anybody's going to go out there and look at that area, have the map with you. So that you can kind of see how things line up and, and how, where they're at. Any other questions on this item? Go ahead.
Just a comment on that point. I agree with you. A, a good benchmark for that other. Development we talked about this evening or this afternoon is where the ITC substation is. Because that other development is south of there. And so then, as Tom clarified, this is then northwest of that, of that area.
Okay.
And it is a thought that there's duplexes between the two.
Yeah, so just to the southeast of this addition right here that we're looking at, that's the area that'll have the duplexes.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, move the meeting back to the mayor. AF3, Tom?
Yep. So the, the next item. So this happens on occasion. We're at that time of year where we have a request come in from a developer to get a permit prior to. Approvals through the final site development plan. Electric Specialty Manufacturing out off of Partners Avenue. They, they have an existing building there. Their preliminary site development plan illustrated a proposed building. It was not included in the final site development plan. They're trying to get footings in the ground. They've made a request for that permit. We've said that this has to go through process and procedures to get. Approved prior to issuance of permit. They have submitted. All of the items that are necessary to go to planning commission and then ultimately back to city council for approval. But they have requested to, to get. Footings in the ground prior to that approval. They've indicated that they would hold, they would. Sign, hold harmlessness and such to provide for that. This is 100% up to the city council. It would, it would provide a permit prior to final site development plan. We haven't had one in a while. You know. I don't know what else to say except they're, they're asking for it. We obviously have processes that we have in place and we, we follow them. The waiver can only be granted by the city council. And to proceed in that manner. If there's a desire to place on the agenda for Thursday for consideration, maybe ask Electric Specialty Manufacturing to come in and answer questions if you have some. That's fine. I'm sure they would be willing to do that. I know Nick Glue has been working with the owners of this property and, and talking through this project and he may have some comments relative to that as well.
So Tom, it, is it, correct me if I'm wrong, is it the case that. Like that they've, they've, they've had plans to build this building, but it was. Made necessary now by damage they had from the derecho? Is that, if I understand that correctly?
I, I understand that there, some of the items that they're wanting to do require storage in this building. And I could be wrong on that. I have not had a direct conversation with the folks, just, just, just with Nick. He would probably be a better person to.
I bet. Was it in? Something?
Mayor, Nick Glue is on if you wanted him to talk or if you had questions for him?
Okay. Yeah, I have one more question for Tom. So. What, if, if they go through the process of approvals, and which they will. And they've already put in the footings, I mean, is that process of approvals likely to change? The footings, the foundation? Or?
They have a preliminary site development plan in place and I think the building is proposed to be slightly larger, but I don't perceive that being an issue. Most of the time when we're looking at these site development plans in a planned development district, we're looking at the. What the building looks like, the aesthetic character, how it's positioned on the property. Since we have a preliminary site development plan that approved the building and its, and its location. And you're just seeking the final, most of that would be above ground type, what it looks like, the aesthetic improvements and such like to say.
So they're taking the risk essentially of.
They would be taking the risk.
But then not having their building approved.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just to clarification. So the building permit, make sure we're clear on this. What they're asking for is a building permit to put the footing, is it footings in only?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
Okay. I think.
And out that they have plans submitted. I have not coordinated directly with building. With, with them to see where those plans are. As the council knows, we're short-staffed right now. Significantly short-staffed, so even if the waiver is provided, we still have processes that we need to follow. There are requirements internally reviewed and set. This isn't done on Thursday and putting footings in the ground on Friday, just so everybody's aware.
Yes, go ahead, Renee.
Just to clarify something you just said, Tom. So if we were to do this, this would not allow for. Us to go through our proper procedural checklist, so to speak.
So this would allow the issuance of a, of the footing permits to, so they get footings in the ground prior to. Approval of the final site development plan. Now, we wouldn't, we wouldn't allow them to go any further until the final site development plan was approved. So once through P&amp;Z and city council. I believe that we're, we're looking at the December P&amp;Z meeting for that and then back to city council probably on the 17th. And I could be wrong on that. I'll have to check and verify for sure, but. So yeah, this, this came up kind of quickly. They did get all their building plans and such in. I just don't know the status of them at this point.
And is there precedence for this?
We used to do some permits prior to final plat. In the fall, if you recall, some, some of you may recall that, just to get the footings in the ground. And there, there wasn't surety being posted and such. And, you know, some, some folks didn't mind it, some. Some were, were not so hip with it. There was kind of mixed feelings on it with the council. We would, we would always, on those situations, we made recommendations kind of based on who we were dealing with, just because. And it wasn't like a picking favorites. It was just, we knew who was doing what and, and what engineers were being involved. And, and so if we had good solid history with them, then we would, we would recommend in that manner. In this instance, we have a preliminary site development plan. They're not proposing much change. Do I see a major hiccup coming? No, but is it out of the ordinary? Yes. So, I mean, it's.
Did we, am I, am I remembering incorrectly? Didn't we do that for Brookwood Estates last winter? They wanted to put in some foundations.
Yeah, that, now that was, yep.
It usually occurs once a year or something like that.
Usually in the fall. They're, the developers are trying to beat the winter. They want to get footings in the ground. It keeps their, keeps their guys working. So that's.
Um, we've had a comment. What they're saying is they're accepting the responsibility. The biggest concern would be the setbacks. If those footings were off, so they, they'll have, when we inspect them and will, they'll have to move the building.
Right. That's on a final plat. This, the, the pins are set here, so there, there wouldn't be any issue. They're, they're a little bit, the two are different. In a final plat, permit prior to final plat, a lot of times the pins aren't even set. So the surveyors are going off their, in the field measurements and they're taking a little bit of risk on that end. But in this instance, the lots established, the main building is there. It's the, the shaded building to the left of this illustration that is being proposed. And so I, I did just get a message from Gary that said he has reviewed the footing plans and so they're, they're good to go. So that is, the, the difference between this and the final plat is is that there, there's pins in place. The can, what is similar is they're both out of practice. It's not our standard protocol. And that's why we're, there's a request for the waiver.
Go ahead.
Mayor?
Thanks.
Oh. Well, let's, let Renee go and then, then Colette, okay? Go ahead, Renee.
So I would be okay with doing this. I get the hard winner and I get why they would want to get ahead of it. So I would just want staff to feel comfortable with having whatever surety so that we weren't on the hook should something go afoul since it's not according to our procedures. But as the mayor stated, we've done it before. So I would want to go ahead and do that as long as we were protected.
Okay, Colette?
So I, I might, I'm thinking the way Renee is thinking a little bit, just wanted to ask the question. Can you articulate specifically what the risk is for us to not follow our typical procedure, although there has been precedent set?
The risk would be that the buildings proposed goes to the, the Planning Commission. They don't like it. It doesn't meet the design standards. They forward a recommendation that can, the City Council and say we're not particularly desirous of this building. And, and then there's a question as to what would happen on top of the footings now. They're taking that risk. We would in turn, we would review it internally, probably in the next couple of days and, and make any kind of thoughts that we would have is if there's any major issues before it goes to Planning Commission, because obviously Planning Commission and City Council, do you guys rely on staff for recommendations? So if we've seen anything outlandish, we would certainly bring that to light, but I don't foresee that being an issue.
Tom, what's the prospect that by Thursday, you'd be able to have even a little bit more comfort level or, you know, more to share in terms of well, we reviewed this and, you know, we feel even better about it? Or would you be able to, you think that's a likelihood by Thursday that you'd be able to?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, I'm not saying you should. I'm just asking if, if you think that'll happen. I know you guys are busy and you're short staffed, so.
No.
I'm not asking you to do it. I've just, if you, if it's not on your schedule, but.
We thought that there, if, if, if we have the understanding that there's something, I mean, it sounds like folks want to accommodate them and get them a building in there. So we will certainly do our best to ensure that whatever they're proposing is, is moving forward in the appropriate manner.
Okay. Rachel, was, was, did you, you mentioned Nick Glue. Was he asking to, to address the council or?
Yes, he did. Uh, he's, we would have to allow him to speak, but he is available.
Okay. I mean, I.
All right, can you guys hear me okay? Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
I assume you guys all received the letter that was submitted by Todd Hine with ESM earlier today. I, I think the important thing is you just really kind of understand the extremely unique context of this request. This request would not be coming forward had it, had it not been for the derecho. If you had an opportunity to look at this building, the, the south wall of their existing facility was essentially blown out during the storm. And they've, they've repaired that temporarily, but what their strategy is, is they need to try and build this building as quickly as possible so that they can relocate equipment out of their existing building in order to then come back and do more permanent extensive repairs to their current facility. So that's really the driving factor of this. And, and one of the reasons that we're helping to advocate on their behalf is because this is a scenario that was really dealt to them and, and not anticipated. The other thing, obviously, when we sold them this property back in 2015, as, as Tom described, the preliminary site development plan that's required with any project outlined kind of, here's the full plan of how we'd like to develop this property at some point in the future. Then with any project, when you do a final site development plan, all it shows is what you're going to build today. So the interesting thing with how the zoning code is set up is in a lot of ways, when you then come to do the next part of the preliminary site development of plan that's already been approved, you have to, in a sense, start over. And so that's what's having to happen here is we're having to go back and go through the whole review process with Planning and Zoning Commission and then ultimately to Council again. And because of the fact that this aligns with the preliminary site development plan and because of the fact that they have already submitted their building plans, we, we think this request is warranted just for the foundation. Now, I was holding on to really push hard on this until they for surely submitted their building plans because in conversations with Mr. Trey Harn, and I, I totally get this, oftentimes we have folks that advocate for, I need my permit, I need my permit, but then they're nowhere near ready to actually submit the actual building plans. In this case, the company actually submitted the building plans before the site plans were submitted. And they fully understand the risk that they're taking. If you don't like approving the actual building, but are willing to, to accept that risk because of the importance of getting this foundation in the ground here in the next couple of weeks. So I've been on some emails back and forth with Gary Hansen, as Tom alluded to, and know that he's doing a great job getting an understanding of the foundation so that should the council approve it, they can at least move forward with that portion of the project before the ground gets too hard. So I'd, I'd be happy to answer any other questions. Todd Hine apologizes for not being able to be here tonight. He's an eye doctor and with the COVID-19 impacts to their business, they needed to extend their hours of seeing patients tonight and was not able to join us here this evening.
Thanks for that additional context. Any questions for Nick? Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question here. Nick, can you, can you explain to me why Medco is even involved with this project and not the developer themselves or the owner?
Yeah, so Todd Hine, he reached out to me probably three weeks after the storm and said, hey, we're going to be pushing a building forward fast at some point. And that's just the relationship we have with, with our, with our business community and, and with this particular company in general. Obviously, first time around, they were, they were dealing more directly with us because while they needed to get approval for planning and zoning, they also needed us as Medco holding company to, to, to be on board with the site development plan and, and the building being proposed, just as much as they needed you as P and Z and, and council to approve it. So in a lot of ways, it's just the close relationship we have with them to help advocate for this project. And, and like I said, Todd, Todd apologizes for not being here himself, so he's proxied me to be his advocate. And he will work to be here on Thursday night to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Nick.
Additional questions or comments? Yes, Grant?
So I think the conversation is pretty well established. They're assuming the risk for doing this. I haven't heard that it really creates any risk for us. And as, as long as they have a, a risk mitigation strategy for their project that would be responsive to any subsequent concerns, planning and zoning, or anybody else would bring up with the construction, the, the, the design and the construction of the building that they are seeking. I guess I, it boils down to the old project manager and me saying, well, we've, we're, we're assuming the risk and we're going to mitigate it. And I think that will compel them to be responsive to any other concerns that we, the city would have.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Just a couple of follow, and I'm so sorry, there are just a lot of details with this. I, I always get a little apprehensive when things kind of, you know, they even admitted that we're trying to push things through and we're trying to accommodate, but I know there's processes of which we work with. I know, you know, we like to have all departments review these billings. I know Gary has reached out to, to Tom here and, you know, police and fire. We have a lot of different entities that need to review these plans. Do we, do we have any feedback on that? I kind of lean towards the idea of, you know, what will the next 48 hours bring to us? Do we have those items? I'm not sure who that needs to go to. Tom, can you tell us a little bit more as to if these have officially gone through all these departments to move forward, even on a comprehensive level?
So the, I, I know that the plans have been submitted. Gary indicated that he's signed off on the foundation plans. So I need to just touch base with my staff and see where they are in the review from elevation and exterior perspective. But I know they've had them for a while, so I'm assuming we're sitting in a pretty good spot.
We have Gary Hansen and Jason Hansen both on the Zoom call.
As far as Randy's question on fire and police, I mean, is that, is that done at this point or has, has that already been done with the prior submittals or how?
Well, when we get it, when we do a preliminary, we, we look at it and then when, when we get a final, like I said, the building's a little bit bigger, I believe. And so, you know, we, we send it back through. It's just the standard review process that we do.
Oh, we'll get reviewed by fire and police again?
Yeah.
But it's already been looked at?
Great. Okay, thank you.
Does everybody have what they need to make a decision on this? Is there anything else? Okay, thank you. Next item is Brookwood Estates. Tom, is that you?
Sorry, I was just reading your comment online here. I don't know if everybody can see the comments, but that we're talking about relative to the, the last subject there. Did, did everybody, can everybody see that? I, I will read it. It's, Jason Hansen with Fire Department had made an indication that he had some concerns and he was having some weak internet. So I didn't know if that was, if that came through for everybody or not.
Oh, no. Oh, we don't, we didn't see any comment.
I don't know if you.
Jason wanted to address the council?
I think he had his hand up. There it is.
Sorry. Okay, so Rachel, can you?
Yeah, Jason is on the call.
Okay.
Jason, you should be unmuted.
Can you hear me, counsel?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I, I respect Tom and Nick's comments and especially the fact that this business owner is wanting to accept responsibility for future endeavors of this facility. We have had past practice of this where it has created some issues. I visited with Fire Marshal Markley and he said the plans have been submitted for this, this specifics we need is a property use on this because square footage is what the property will be used for. It could create some issues. We don't like rushing into things like that, but I just want to make sure, since Chief Cables gone this evening, that I speak on behalf of the Fire Department and say that we would like to have a full review of this property, square footage and building use completed. Otherwise, just as long as the building or the property owner is accepting responsibilities for future build out and requirements, they have to understand that there could be things that come with that.
Okay, so Jason, are you saying that you're, you're recommending having your review prior to any approval of a foundation permit? Or, or just as part of the process?
I think he's on Brookwood.
Are you on Brookwood? No.
He's back on this. He's talking about Electric Specialty.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the Partner, Partners, Partners Avenue and Medco Drive.
Yeah, so.
If I could paraphrase for a moment, Mayor, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but the conversation so far has really revolved around the building owner accepting liability for the foundation part. What Jason's alluding to is that further review might mean that there's something else that they have to modify or accept responsibility to change in order for the Fire Department to feel comfortable signing off on the project. So, you know, if they had to move a water line, for example, or something like that, if it, if sprinklers needed to be installed, it's not just the foundation, but there are some other pieces that the building owner is just going to have to realize that they're accepting some liability for.
That's on the completed project, but as far as the foundation, the, the Fire Department is, doesn't have concern with proceeding at this point with the foundation? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to establish.
Counsel, if I could, let, let me get with all the departments on the project. I'm sure there's been some summary review within. And we, we can report out on Thursday until you have all the of that. Sort of trying to mine through the process here, because there's.
All right. Okay, thanks, Tom. Are you ready to move on to Brookwood Estates?
I am. This one's easy. It's all good. You can see this is the rather large final plat. Pretty exciting to see this project come together. This is, uh, got some interesting and different home styles within it. So you're seeing the, the single family and some of the rear loaded coming in on that side of it. So I don't know, if the council hasn't been out in this area, I would definitely try to take some time to get out there. There's only a few units out there right now. Last time I was out, but as this area comes together, you're going to see one of our, a truly a mixed, mixed residential neighborhood. So it's, uh, we really need to see how it all comes together.
Okay. Any questions on on the final plat and memorandum of agreement for Brookwood Estates Second Edition? Okay, number five, six and seven are not marked for discussion. Any questions on those? Okay, we have a discussion regarding self-storage facilities in the BR Business Regional Zoning District and site building design standards.
Uh, thank you, Rachel. I don't know who's, I don't know who's in the building running the PowerPoint. If they can go to the next slide.
Is it possible to increase the volume for Tom somehow?
My apologies. I can try and sit a little closer if that works. I've never been told that I'm speaking softly.
It's just kind of cutting out a little bit and it's a little bit hard to, to understand what you're saying sometimes. Not all the time, but sometimes.
So this is stemming from the conversation we had Seth Green presenting his project down on the corner of 151 and 13. I want to do just a little background on storage, mini storage or self-storage, it's called in some communities. And, and before we get into some of the details, I do realize that and I'm happy that Seth provided the council with a great deal of research on self-storage and where they're located in other communities. He did a lot of work on that. That helps me because honestly, I've just played off what Seth provided. Dave did a lot of that conversation, but I, I have no doubt what Seth, Seth did was just as good. So with that, I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the historical context of self-storage and Marion, as you can see, that illustrates the locations of self-storage currently. We have quite a bit of it. A few years back, and I, I did not research when the moratorium went into place, but the moratorium, moratorium did expire in 2019. When there was a point at which the council said, timeout, there's too much storage going into our commercial areas. And so we, we need to just put a, a hold on that. And when we were, especially when we were doing our central corridor work, that, that moratorium was put in place. It did, and it was primarily along. It did, and it was primarily along Seventh Avenue area that wasn't out east of town that I recall. I think it was just primarily in the commercial. So that, there is a little bit of a history with some concern with the number of storage units and storage properties within the community. Can you go to the next slide please? So I just want to give the council a little perspective on what we see as storage, mini warehouse, call it what you like in the community. Uh, now I know Seth is provo, providing something that we've not seen except for maybe the Pelly project out in the industrial park that was presented a few months ago. That is climate controlled, primarily a climate controlled building. He does have mini warehouse in the back and a little different concept, but really what Mr. Green is proposing is something new to mark. And to be able to say, hey, we should allow that everywhere and call it mini warehouse. I just want to give context to what we see up until now, what mini warehouse looks like. So here's some property on Industrial Avenue, some property on Third Avenue, next slide. Here's some storage on Moon Year Road, both, both pages, next slide. Here's some on Red Fox Way. This one's fairly new. It's caught the attention of a few folks, wondered, you know, where that and how, if that was even legal on Highway 13. On Blair's Ferry Road, we've got some storage. They did set this back, and I think this is a good example and a good conversation to have a later date. But they set this back and they left us a lot on the front. So this property could redevelop with a commercial building on the front, but it does have warehouse set back off the road aways. But there's still a building pad on that site. Next slide. Mr. Green's property is here. When Dale drive the top one, you can see he, he has done similarly what we were just, what I just talked about. He's got his office building on the front and then the units are set back. And he's got a fence around them, landscape. They've got, he's got pond and he did a very nice job with his site. Another form of the self-storage that we see a lot of is accessory self-storage. So this is an area off East Both Road. They have apartments above this building and they have mini warehouse on the side. Consider what would be, I guess, considered from our perspective as accessory to their primary use, which is a mixed use building. So there's a whole host of, of what mini storage can mean. I think Sess Project is, is a, a nice looking project. I just don't think that we can sit there and say, Mr. Green's self-storage facility is what we typically see as self-storage and therefore just open the, open the zoning up and allow it everywhere. If you can go to the next slide please. So our, our code that we're working through right now provides the opportunity for, for mini warehouse to be located in the areas identified in purpose. That's the industrial area. The proposed or the conversation we had at the last meeting was potentially opening that up to the, to a regional business district. The proposed areas in our community that are in business are, are in the red. Staff would not be comfortable and does not support moving self-storage in its proposed state to anywhere outside of, into the commercial districts other than the business regional districts. And that I think we need to have a, a conversation with our design. Next slide please. So just to kind of, the regulatory framework, I just kind of outlined that our new zoning permits in the mini warehouse and then M1, M2 district. The moratorium, there was that whole conversation and it did expire at point of eighteen. Now, to get to the research that Seth provided, there's no doubt in my mind and I wholeheartedly understand that a lot of communities provide for that. The question I would ask the council, and we've talked about it internally, is the, the buildings that I illustrated, are those what you want to see in your commercial district? And so the, that's where we're at is I, you know, I would say that from a staff perspective, if the design of the buildings that are going to be proposed are similar to what we've seen in the past, they should be in the industrial district. Now, go to the next slide please. What Mr. Green is proposing is something different. It's a climate controlled environment. You pull the building, you pull a vehicle into the building, you can unload it, it's multi-story. It has a completely different look and feel than any other mini warehouse storage that we've. Uh, if you go online and you do, do a simple Google search of climate controlled storage and do a Google search for mini warehouse, there is a stark difference between the two uses. I mean, it is substantial. One looks like a warehouse, one does not look like a warehouse, it's like it could be a commercial building. So there are, there are design considerations that could be made, I think, to move the climate controlled buildings into the regional business district. Now, I, I don't have all of the details on that. I, I think staff would need to take some time and look at it. If the council so desires to see the self-storage expanded into the business regional or the regional business districts, some of the things that I think need to be considered are how that project would sit on the property. I think if there's going to be traditional storage, there should be setbacks from materials and residential development. I think the location of individual doors needs to be set away from the public right of ways and residential areas. There should be some screening and buffering standards. Exterior materials and design review should be a part of it. And I also, I also believe that if, if we are going to open it up and there, we have a lot of the regional business areas that are but residential areas, there should be some considerations made that those areas would be a conditional use so that adjacent property owners would understand and know that there is many storage going to be located directly adjacent to them or within a so many feet of them. I don't have that footage proposed or anything. I just think as we've looked through some of the ordinances, there are design considerations made. It isn't just the car launch. Everything is good, there's no condition. Their communities do have some conditions on some of their uses. I think, um, we've reviewed the ordinances. The city of Cedar Rapids ordinance is a good one. Seth brought it up. I think a lot of the things that came out of, of the Cedar Rapids ordinance could be incorporated. But I think the more specific thing that needs to be identified is the difference between the, the climate controlled buildings and then the actual standardized mini warehouse. So, um, I, I don't have a proposed ordinance for you. One of the things that came out as we started researching this was that from a staff perspective, it's really difficult for me to come to the council and say that the traditional mini warehouse units should be anywhere but industrial. That said, if there's a desire to look at the climate controlled units that have operation, uh, business operations in them during the day, that's a, that's a different subject. So that's where staff's standing on this, and I think the council is looking for our, our opinion or recommendation. Um, and so if there is a desire to, to move, move to that into the vengeance regional district, we could, you guys can make a motion directing staff to proceed with that. And we could do a lot more research on it, but at this point, that's kind of where we were, we're standing with our recommendation. Now, I will say that we had two weeks to get this together, so it's not like I've had a lot of time to, to dive in. But I can just tell you that, uh, when we reviewed what we've seen in the past, it's difficult for us to open that door and, and make the suggestion that many storage should be brought into the business regional districts, regardless of what other communities are doing, uh, without some serious design consideration.
I, I agree, since we've just gone through the process of deciding that we don't want many storage in the, in the, I mean, it was a, it was a definite decision that we wanted to limit it to industrial zones. We're going through a redevelopment of the central corridor where there were lots of mini storage facilities right up against the main thoroughfare in our commercial district. You know, and we've been, you know, working on helping that all redevelop. Whether or not there's a, there should be a different standard for the, for the temperature controlled office type looking, uh, uh, storage. You know, that's another, another story, but, um, I agree that it, that the, the traditional storage garages should not be in the, in the main commercial districts up against the main thoroughfares and you know, and, and if the other type is, is permitted, I, I think there should be pretty clear standards, I think, you know, to, so that it, it looks appropriate in, in, in a commercial district in terms of the type of materials. So, but yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Tom, uh, again, I agree with your overall recommendation that we should probably, we should not have self-storage facilities in the new B R zoning area. However, I would, I do believe that we should be making an exception for the climate controlled self-storage buildings. I think you're talking two completely different entities, two completely different looking projects. Uh, I did go up to, my wife and I did make a drive up to Waterloo and I did look at Mr. Green's facility that he has on San Martin, just off between Highway 20 and San Martin Drive. It mirrors the pictures that he has sent us. It is a very good looking facility. It's right in an office, commercial area, and it fits in. It looks good, but it's the climate controlled building only. He does not have any of the other self, smaller self-storage buildings or garages, as I would call them. What he's proposing here on the corner of Highway 151 and 13 is a combination of those two. So if I look at what's out on that corner, would that building, with the climate controlled building by itself, look good on that building with the quick start to one side? We got the manufacturing southeast of it and we got the outdoor storage to the south of it. You know, that's going to look very nice on that corner, but I would never, never support it with the project as he's proposing with having the other outdoor smaller storage facility. So that's kind of my thought process. I think the climate controlled storage buildings that is being proposed by Mr. Green and the other one that is going into the Marion Commerce Park, those are, those climate controlled buildings, both of those are very nice looking buildings with the appropriate exterior design to it. So that's where I would support, uh, that kind of a project going forward.
If I could say something?
Tom?
Can I say something or?
Go ahead.
One of the things that we, and I, I would point this out in the Cedar Rapids code. We had an internal conversation with staff on this as well. And that is, you know, in the event that there are, there is ground that's not directly on a corridor, let's say, I, I thought the Blair's Ferry one was a little, a pretty good example of a building came in and you had office building on the front and there was storage in the back and some of the ground that extends out and back and it's not adjacent to residential. I think there are some places where that can occur, but it would be not to be the principal use, you know what I mean? So it's be, it could be accessory to the principal.
Mayor? Yes, go ahead, Will.
I would also, I'd like to agree with what almost everything Steve is saying, and then I agree with what Tom just said. Um, I think that the climate controlled building should be allowed with all the, you know, the setbacks, what's listed there on the screen, that type of stuff. But then if there is the, the mini storage units to go along with these larger ones, they need to be set back out of view. Lots of buffering so that they're not viewable from the main, the main road, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Grant.
Well, I would just want to go on record of saying I, I have a similar general position that Steve and Will have just outlined. And I, I just think, I'm not sure we're going to run into a, a lot of this style of facility, but the nice thing is it's not just a bunch of quantity cut looking roll-up doors that ultimately rust. It looks like the concept is, is that it's going to end up being a quality built aesthetically pleasing building. So, um, I'm, I'm generally in line with Steve and Will on this.
Yeah, I have to say that, you know, when I first looked at the, on that particular project, looked at the, the picture of the building, I thought, well, this, this could be okay. But then I was turned off when I saw the rest of it at the last meeting, that there were many storage buildings around it. And that, to me, that was a negative, so. Mayor?
Yeah, and the one, the one in Waterloo that I looked at was the, was the climate controlled building by itself. It did not have any other exterior storage buildings. And again, I think that's what made it look appropriate in that office and commercial environment.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead.
Yeah, so there's a, there is a, um, a note, I guess, from Mr. Green on the question and answer that says his new updated proposal has limited the traditional units and only have the climate controlled building.
It's eliminated, you said?
That's what it says. Yeah, that's what his note says on the question and answer screen.
I don't have my screen up, so, okay.
When you're at home, you get to see all those.
We can't see it.
So, Tom, this discussion is just in general about storage facilities and we're not making any decisions here on that particular.
Well, I, I've got, I think I've got pretty good direction. And I, I think the, the way I would like, maybe I can, I can put something on the agenda, motion directing staff to proceed with, you know, taking, I don't want to even begin to say what, essentially say, you know, creating some standards surrounding many storage and self-storage for review of consideration. I, I just want, if that makes sense to everybody, because currently we don't really even address climate controlled self. And, and I think that might be something, a way to, that we can do this. Excuse me. So I'll, I'll come up with some language directing that now. You know, I, I know Seth, 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 and I've rented from Seth and I've worked with Seth in the past, but I, I don't have any hard feelings about Seth and this project at all. I, I will communicate with Seth, but I just want everybody to understand now. So we're, we're not trying to rush to rezone property to make his use unavailable on that property. That's not any intent of ours and I, I've indicated that. So, um, but this takes time. An amendment to the zoning code requires it be, you know, runs through planning, the zoning commission, commissions that pay recommendations, public hearing and pre-reading. So there, you know, there, there is, there's time that's allotted for this, though it does, it is, it's not something that's going to be done overnight. That's why I really wanted to take some time in the next, in the last two weeks, you know, we spring forward. Hey, this is what we think we could support moving forward. So if we got some time, we can, you know, get some direction from council to proceed. We could look at the requirements, bring it back with consideration. And then once we get some, some nod, we'll go back to planning, zoning commission for a recommendation back to the council, if that makes sense. I know that was kind of thrown together, but that's how I would see this occur.
Okay, anything else for Tom? So Tom, will there be something on Thursday on the agenda for this or?
Would I, I'd like to get a motion directing staff.
Okay, so there'll be a motion.
I think that'll help Seth, or I think that'll help him understand where the council sits as well. I know who's trying to make some decisions on, on his project and the property.
Okay. Anything else on that item? Okay, moving on to COVID discussion. That lawn?
That is mayor.
So this has been a hot topic for everybody lately. As councils are aware, the city has moved back into our phase one protocols with a few additions into our operations from the way that we have been previously operating with this. But I know that the city council wanted to have some discussions about this, especially in light of the actions that the Lynn County Board of Public Health took, and as far as actually taking the step to create an end or a mask mandate for Lynn County. So the Lynn County Board of Supervisors does not have authority to do that unilaterally on their own, but the state code gives the Board of Health wide responsibility and fairly wide-ranging powers when it comes to protecting public health. So what they have done is they've promulgated a regulation that has to be approved and endorsed by the Lynn County Board of Supervisors and published, and then it would go into effect. So I provided that to the city council for review. They have asked if other local government entities would be supportive of it. As a Lynn County one, they have the authority as the Board of Health to put that in place, but I was not sure if the city council wanted to pass any other measures of support. In past actions, we had put together the mask advisory proclamation and had discussions with the council about potentially going a step further and making it a requirement, but did not. Additionally, as you know, the governor introduced additional restrictions on gatherings, sporting events, and a host of other activities at a press conference on Monday, and so that has to be taken into effect as well. So really just wanted to get some direction from the council on if you want to take any additional action with this, if you have questions or concerns about how it would operate. The Board of Supervisors has not acted on this yet. I believe they're, that they're looking at it at their Monday meeting, is it the 23rd? Yeah, I believe it's the 23rd, the, the Lynn County Board of Supervisors will take action on that.
Lon, I think the, the first question is, does the governor's updated proclamation do anything to make this county regulation? I don't, I don't know, I don't know if the word is moot, but if, you know, does it just sort of make it unnecessary?
There are differences between the two, because the governor's proclamation focused a lot on gatherings and specific types of businesses like restaurants, bars, bowling alleys. But this one, Lynn County's also includes grocery stores, pharmacies, hardware stores, really any retail stores that were not necessarily included or spelled out in the governor's proclamation. And I know that this is an area that politically has been a bit of a minefield for folks, but normally the local government entity, unless the state entity specifically says you cannot be more restrictive than we can, the local government entity can be more restrictive. And in looking at the two side by side, Lynn County's provides additional restrictions beyond that of the governors, but I did not see any areas where it was in conflict.
I, I understood the governor's proclamation to, to require masks for certain-sized groups anywhere indoors.
Yes, but this one actually requires it out, Lynn County's requires it out of doors as well, when you cannot stay six feet away from others. And there's no limitations or no prescription on the, the size of the gathering.
So you're, you're asking the council if, if there's any interest in endorsing the counties?
Yes.
Proposed regulation or doing something different?
Yeah, the, the governor's obviously applies everywhere in Iowa, because that one has already been promulgated. Lynn County's won't be until the Board of Supervisors acts on it. And then after that, my understanding is it would apply anywhere in Lynn County.
They don't need our approval?
No, they do not. But they were asking if any other local governments would do resolutions of support. It's not a, an approval of it, but it's just an indication of support for their action.
Clarify for me 100%, because I want to make sure I'm understanding that. I, I did not think that the Lynn County Board of Supervisors could dictate to the cities what our policy would be. Am I wrong on that?
The Lynn County Board of Health is different than the Board of Supervisors. Public health has authority within city limits as well, just like how they regulate air quality. They exercise that in the city limits, just as they do outside the city limits.
So, I mean, personally speaking, I was thrilled to finally see the governor take action, take the action that she did. So again, I was kind of like, Nick, I thought it was going to be the discussion we were going to have tonight was going to be more of a moot point or unnecessary. So, I mean, I'm fine with, I'm certainly much more acceptable having this statewide situation where everybody understands what's going on. Whether we need to get more strict, I guess I'd have to, I'm not sure I know exactly what the differences are between the two. Is it, is it primarily the, just the outdoor piece of it?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. If you read the governor's proclamation, the mask requirement is only applicable if you are inside an indoor space open to the public and within six feet of individuals who are not members of your same household for 15 minutes or more. So it's not a blanket requirement if you're inside a grocery store or a, I, I don't remember what they all listed. So you would be able to be in those places if you're essentially following social distancing without wearing a mask. I'm not sure that everybody is reading that way, and I'm not sure if that's exactly what was intended. I do believe there's going to be further clarification on this based on the flurry of emails I've seen today. I would also point out that there is already a pending lawsuit in the state of Iowa against a city which should give us a little bit more information as to how the courts are going to apply home rule in this situation. We do generally have the authority to make more strict requirements, so long as they're not inconsistent or in conflict with what the governor has already said. The governor's lawyers have issued already a statement this year that says, no, you can't do that at all, which I have yet to speak with another attorney who says that they agree with the governor's attorneys on that. It seems like a violation of the state constitution and the separation between what city power is and the state power. I would also add just that I happen to have some information as well coming from the governor's policy advisor that there will be further clarification about what those recreational gatherings that are prohibited are. Specifically, I know that he has sent out an email to a group of people who were upset about it being unclear what that means for places like martial arts, gymnastics, dance, things like that. I received specific clarification this morning that individual recreational activities does include one-on-one training, so you can still take private music lessons. You just can't go practice with your band unless it's a school activity. I've since then seen an email from Logan Line, who is the policy advisor to the governor, that places like yoga studios, dance studios, martial arts, gymnastics places, they will still be allowed to operate. They just cannot go to meets, competitions, have exhibitions, performances. But they have to follow the social distancing standards, which if you read it, it does not appear what the language says. However, that was an email I received this afternoon.
Wow. My comment that I started, so it sounds like there is some conflict between the two, because what I was willing to come tonight to support would basically probably mirror more Lynn County health, because again, I feel it's more appropriate that if you're going to go into a grocery store, it sounds like the governor's one could be interpreted that gee, I can go in there and I'm not going to be near anybody for more than 15 minutes. I'm just going to be walking down the aisles, walking through it, therefore I don't need a mask. And to me, those are the types of stores and a number of others that need a mask mandate, because there's a lot of people very concerned and unwilling to go to those stores. So I would be certainly more on the lines of Lynn County Health, because the governor's, sounds like it's got way too many gray areas that still need to be defined.
It does have far more restrictions such as allowing participation in a religious or spiritual gathering. There's no masks required, even though those are frequently relatively large gatherings, especially at the upcoming holiday season. So there are some pretty broad exceptions there. Now, whether or not we could do something that eliminates those exceptions, we would have to look at whether that makes it more or less strict, but I think that it's something to consider.
And, and the, the public health order, uh, regulation does have enforcement. So I don't know if that's a consideration too. Like who enforces that? It's a misdemeanor.
Yeah, we haven't had a chance to read either one of these.
Yep. And there's no particular urgency on it, but this is a standing agenda item, and I know that the issue had come up and several council members had indicated wanting to talk about it and reach out to the mayor. I don't believe that it's a requirement that the city council has to act on this, but it was a request from the Lynn County Board of Public Health that the city's consider it, so that's why I'm advancing it.
Mayor?
Yes, Colette, go ahead.
So, um, if I understand, uh, the conversation that we're having is certainly the governor came out with her proclamation, which appears to have some opportunities for folks to not wear masks if they can social distance inside different facilities. And the Lynn County Public Health, if, if that is approved, then that would sort of shore up the concerns perhaps inside buildings and then outside buildings if folks cannot social distance. Is that accurate?
Kara?
Correct. The Lynn County, uh, the Lynn County regulation certainly makes that more clear. Again, I, I think we'll probably see some clarification from the governor on this in the next two days. I, I'm going to be looking for a press conference probably tomorrow already on this, just based on the flurry of emails I said, or I've seen today, like I mentioned earlier.
Okay, so if that's the, it's a little confusing, right? And so I think if it's a little confusing to us, I can't imagine what it is for the general population, but I would certainly be in support of if Lynn County Public Health doesn't sort of shore up, right, those places where folks don't have to wear masks inside facilities. I would be in support of that in Marion to have a mask requirement inside regardless of the ability to social distance. So I think a prime example is, maybe it was Steve that was talking about that, the supermarket. You know, we, our healthcare facilities and our healthcare employees and workers, they're really stretched thin beyond the whole concern about, you know, people getting ill. And it seems like we've been presented, my perspective is that I've seen enough information to, to consider having that mask requirement in our community and protecting our residents.
Now, with the timing of this playing out the way that it is, I've, assuming that Lynn County Board of Supervisors acts on it next Monday, it'd be simple enough to put something on the following city council agenda for further consideration. But I wanted to make sure that you were aware of this and bring it to you. As Kara said, I think we will likely see some clarification in the coming days, because I think they maybe inadvertently created more confusion than they had intended when they put the last proclamation out that they'll have to clarify.
Anyone else? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Well, as I think all of you know, I have a tendency to bias myself to the science behind all of this. As I just, this is really more of just a comment on how this has evolved over time. I'm, I, I'm really thankful that seatbelt enforcement hasn't been made more complex by varying exemptions and caveats and conditions that I see in the current proclamation from the governor. Simplicity in situations like this promotes compliance. And I just am sure there are people that would read the proclamation or even Lynn County's proposed document, and they're going to be confused what they really should do. And so I'm, if, if Lynn County takes action and we respond to it, I guess I would just want to be sure that we're responding in a way that is simplistic and clearly directive to our citizens. Right now, there's too many variations and, and caveats that really the, the average person is just going to quit thinking about it and do whatever they believe they should do. So.
Yes, go ahead.
One more comment, I think, you know, Colette talked about the strain that it has had on our hospitals and our healthcare workers. I've got a particular situation that personally affects me by everything that's going on, and that is now all of the hospitals are starting to cut back on their elective surgeries because they need more rooms for COVID patients. So I'm in a situation where I'm clear out to February, waiting for an elective surgery. And so the, I, I'm in that class of people that have been waiting months to have a surgery, have been going on months with quite a bit of pain and discomfort, and then all of a sudden, if they get a phone call and says, sorry, your date just got moved out a month or two months or indefinite, and now, you know, you're in that waiting game. So, you know, personally, I'm concerned that the date I have out there, February 3rd, is going to come and go, and it's going to be clear out there another month or two later. And so, you know, I, there's a number, I'm not just talking about myself, there's a lot of people out there with elective surgeries, with hip replacements, knee replacements, all these types of things that people have been waiting quite a long time to go for. And so all of a sudden, COVID is now going to delay that, partially because the state and cities have not put a mask mandate in and another procedures months ago. So to me, this is long overdue, and it needs to be tightened down to bring COVID under control and get things to normalcy.
So what's your proposal?
Well, my proposal is we need to find out, clarify, get some clarifications of what the state is doing, but certainly, I haven't had a chance to read either one of these, so I don't know exactly what the Lynn County Health is considering. But it certainly, I would lean towards that based on what Kara told us tonight, but they're both, either one is certainly better than where we were last week. So we're better, but there's still some opportunity, I think, to tighten it down.
Lon, was Lynn County looking for endorsement from the cities before they vote on it, or does that not matter?
No, they weren't. I mean, depending on the council meeting schedules for the different municipalities, some of them weren't going to be able to meet before the Board of Supervisors looks at it anyway. And depending on what the governor may issue for clarifications between now and Monday, when the Board of Supervisors takes it up, that may influence their actions as well.
Okay. Anything else to add to this discussion? Go ahead, Renee.
Not to this discussion, but.
Do you have something else?
Yes.
Anything else on this discussion?
I got something real quick. If, if we, I guess it's more of, I think maybe we need to prepare, prepare that we might need to meet prior to our next meeting, if we need to come together and, and potentially change the proclamation that we have in place where we're just recommending masks to where potentially we might make it mandated. So I just want to throw that out there, because from what I'm hearing, if we don't get a good clarification from the, from the governor, then that might be the route we need to go. I guess in my mind, the route we need to go.
I don't, I just have a, it's not regarding masks, but COVID, so I don't know if I can ask that question.
Yes, please.
So you said we had moved to phase one. So will we, we as in our city council meetings, will they trans, transition to virtual at some point? Are we going to continue to have face-to-face experiences in phase one, Lon? Can you provide clarification? Are we gonna continue to have face-to-face experiences in phase one, Lon? Can you provide clarification?
I would anticipate that they will move to virtual to the maximum extent that we can, but I also know that some folks don't always have the most reliable internet. So they have to come here or um being able to record sometimes is easier if council members are here. Uh, as long as we can stay within the other restrictions and we're able to more than adequately social distance and observing mask protocols. We could potentially have council members uh attend here for meetings, but I would anticipate that um we're gonna use online platforms as much as we can.
Yeah.
Is that muddy?
Yep, it sounds like the governor's proclamation.
We would significantly prefer to use online platforms.
Anything else on COVID? Okay, Renee, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, mayor. Yeah, I have two time sensitive issues. One is just to mention um that tomorrow at four thirty, I'm doing a tour at the Y. I believe a couple people have already seen it, but if two people wanna join, I'm sure. Um, that that would be welcome, just to kind of have a walkthrough because I'm hearing some updates. The second item is to request a closed session this Thursday. Because we're all gonna be here anyway to, um, with the full council to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Anything else? Okay, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.